All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order because we need some order tonight. It is, good evening, welcome to the City of Sumamish Planning Commission Meeting of July 24th. It is 6:30 PM and I'm gonna start with roll call on my left, please.
Mike Collins.
Cynthia Crass.
Bill Jarrett.
Ryan Coleman.
Frank Blau.
Mike Luxenberg.
And Commissioner Islam is absent tonight. He had a previous engagement. Our meetings this month shifted for some that maybe are paying attention out there. So, anyway, so the next thing we're gonna look at is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda and the minutes.
Ooh, a little bit of twist. Agenda and minutes, all in favor of approving the agenda and minutes of July 10th?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Perfect, agenda is approved and so are the minutes of July 10th. Work program calendar. You're, um, am I, you turned on, sorry. So, the work program calendar that's in your packet, we, you're headed into your summer recess at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Your first meeting back in September, September 4th, we are confirmed with the items that are reflected on your work program calendar for that night. That will be an introduction, excuse me, to tree retention, code amendment changes, possible amendment changes, as well as a work session on the Kohani annexation. Beyond September 4th, the schedule is still a little bit in flux. We're working a number of items that we hope to move some of the comp plan work sessions up still on the calendar, stretch a few other things out a little bit. The one other item we are very certain on continuing as reflected on this calendar is September 18th, the public hearing on the Kohani annexation is pretty much set in stone for September 18th. That will probably be the only item that evening, as it could be a full house, just like you have here today, so. So, when we come back in September, we'll have, we should have a fairly certain calendar for the rest of your 2014 meeting schedule for you on September 4th. But September is pretty well set at this point, it's just how we rearrange things October through the end of the year. One other additional item that's not reflected on here at the moment that also has come up on our schedule is council passed an emergency moratorium in regards to certain lots on historic plats created before, I believe, 1977 in regards to having to meet drainage standards. And specifically, this is an area over in the Inglewood Hills area. So, an emergency ordinance was passed at their last meeting. They'll be conducting a public hearing in September, as is required by state law, and the moratorium is good for six months. Additional direction was given to staff to work with the planning commission on code amendments in regards to specific stormwater regulations for that area and bring that back to council at the beginning of 2015. So, we'll be adding that to your calendar as well. Is that based on the public comment that we got, the people that spoke in that particular area, or is it something different?
At your last, public comment from your last meeting?
Yeah.
That's something different.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Just where the Inglewood Hill neighborhood is?
Just to, the Inglewood, it's, so, you're asking the new guy here. Pass to Susan. Yeah, Susan's gonna more accurately describe the street names because I'm not quite there yet.
Yeah, I don't really have all the street names, but it's the Inglewood Platte, which is quite an old plat, it's late 1800s, early 1900s, and it consists of very tiny platted lots of about 25 feet by 100. And there's a concern with the drainage, the cumulative effect of the drainage, and the fact that 2,000 square feet is kind of an exemption before it kicks in a drainage review. And what they actually did was squeeze down the 2,000 square feet to 500 square feet so that any development that is able to proceed has to do a better look at the drainage before it could be approved. That hearing, we'll have a hearing at the city council, and then they've also given direction for some permanent regulations which will come your way in the fall. Is that answered?
I don't need the street names, but is it along Inglewood Hill Road, is that where it is?
Yes, it's right, mostly to the north, I think, of that.
Can I do that, when you say drainage, you're talking about runoff, or are you talking about?
Stormwater drainage.
Stormwater runoff, okay.
Okay, any other questions on the work program calendar? Sounds like we'll be busy when we come back. All right, so it sounds like no other comments or discussion on the work program calendar, so, do you have any directors' report for us tonight, Jeff? Actually, we ended up tying that last item, the emergency ordinance, into the calendar, and that was really the one item that we wanted to report on tonight, too, so. Okay. All right, so next we have public comment. Is there anybody, this is for non-agenda items only.
Can the audience phone in?
I'm looking at the audience. There is nobody here tonight. I don't know if it's because I-90 has been shut down to one lane, and 520 is blocked. And every, and it, well, it was pretty bad coming home tonight. But there's nobody here tonight, so I guess we'll pass on public comment.
Or we can open it and close it.
Public comment is open. Nobody commenting. Public comment is closed. Yes, he would. All right, so tonight, we are going to be receiving a presentation from staff on some new regulations, some new land use regulations on recreational marijuana. And after that, we're gonna have some questions and answers, hold a public hearing, have a discussion, and hopefully come to a conclusion that we can forward on to the city council.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, Chair, Commission, Susan Caesar, Community Development. Tonight, we are, as the Chair mentioned, we are talking about recreational marijuana regulations. We're gonna hold the public hearing and hopefully move on to deliberations and a recommendation. The status of the two marijuana topics in the city, right, this is recreational is the primary topic here. We currently have a moratorium in effect for those facilities, and that expires January 11th of next year. It's a land use regulation, and hence that's why we're here at the commission tonight. The city council did, when they extended that moratorium, give the commission some guidance as to what their preferred outcome would be, and that would be the prohibition of marijuana producer, processor, and retailers within the city limits. There also is a thing called a collective garden, and that's the term used for medical marijuana facilities. The city council also passed a prohibition already on that. It's not considered a land use regulation, and so it didn't need commission review. But included in your packet, we've taken those regulations and wanting to fold those into our land use tables so that all the, all the land uses are in the same place in the code, and that hopefully would avoid confusion if someone's looking to see what's allowed and or not allowed. The regulatory scheme for those different types of marijuana is also a little different. Medical marijuana was approved in 1998, and then it was amended, the state law was amended to allow collective gardens. The governor did a partial veto. That caused quite a bit of confusion because certain sections were stricken and others were left in. So, that's been kind of up in the air a little bit about where does that fit in the regulatory scheme. Recreational marijuana, of course, is, was approved by I-502, and it was implemented by the Liquor Control Board with some rules. The, where there was some hope that the state legislature in January would take some action to fold those two regulatory schemes together and bring medical marijuana into the recreational system. It didn't happen, but the only thing that they did do was allow for some sale of marijuana concentrates in retail outlets. So, what's a little bit new, there was a little more clarity on medical marijuana through a lawsuit with the city of Kent, and it went to the State Court of Appeals. And essentially, the court held that collective gardens aren't legal under the state law, after all. And they also, they also addressed local government zoning authority and said that cities and counties have the ability to prohibit medical marijuana facilities. And it also applied, as I understand it, to recreational marijuana facilities. There's also an Attorney General's opinion which applies to recreational marijuana, indicating that I-502 did not preempt cities and counties from prohibiting recreational marijuana facilities. So, what are other jurisdictions doing? They've adopted either interim or permanent zoning, allowing for the facilities. Some of them still have moratorium effect, and then there's kind of a growing list of jurisdictions who've decided to prohibit the facilities. I did, there's kind of a partial list there, and I did see today that the city of Fife has joined that list as well.
Excuse me, Susan, is there a list also of cities that agreed to allow it?
There is, I didn't bring that with me, but we could locate it. It's, the best place to find all that information is the Municipal Research Services Center website, and they actually have a chart on there with links to the different ordinances. And there are quite a few that have adopted permanent zoning. Seattle is probably the best example. Seattle would like to have more licenses for their city. But there are a number of other ones that have also gone in that direction. And then, there's still quite a list that have moratorium in effect as well.
Susan, question, I'm curious about our neighboring cities.
That's what I was, King County, I mean.
Uh, King County, I believe, has adopted zoning.
I believe Issaquah and Redmond have.
Yeah, I'm not certain of that, but I do know there are some proposed facilities in Issaquah, and last I seen, they were still under consideration. But, yeah, I can't answer that for certain, but we could go on the internet and look it up if you need that.
I think Kirkland is close to adopting some as well.
Zoning.
Would these be zoning for or against?
To allow for the facilities, I think, is what he's referring to, yeah. So, if, if we went in a different direction, we didn't have a moratorium, and we didn't have a permanent ban, where could facilities be located in the city? The state has some locational criteria, and you have to be 1,000 feet from any of this list of facilities. This is one thing to keep in mind with this, the next slide's got a map on it that kind of shows where these are. It is a little bit fluid, because, for instance, especially a childcare center, those come and go, and so the map is kind of a snapshot in time. This is kind of small, I do have a hard copy here if you wanna, if we need to, we'll pass that around. But the locations are very few. Most of our commercial areas are fully constrained by the 1,000-foot buffers from those facilities. There's a tiny corner of the Town Center C on the very northwestern tip that is outside of that radius, and the other location is along East Lakes Mamish Parkway by the 711.
Susan, with your mouse real quick, could you just show us where the sort of prohibition buffers are?
Do you want the pointer, Susan?
This thing? Can you show me, Debbie, how, oops.
Use this pointer, that's better.
Okay. I just lost the...
If it's possible to do with your mouse, so people at home, does this video feed straight to the, the TV video feed?
Right there.
So, how does this work, Debbie?
Is it not the same?
Okay, there we go. All right, so here's the little 711 area on East Lakes Mamish Parkway, and then the area on Town Center C is right there. So, those are kind of the only two commercial areas that are outside the, currently outside the 1,000-foot buffer. Do you want me to re-point at those again here? Okay, right there.
Is it that whole purple area, or was it just a corner?
No, it's just a little corner, and in fact, I asked our GIS person to give me an idea of how big that was. It's not very big, and so presumably it would, you know, be a, a unit in some of the larger building. It's about 40 feet at the widest part and 170 feet at the highest part, right side of the triangle. So, it's quite small, and it's also, it's, that one's a little questionable, honestly, because it's Town Center C, which is primary residential, so that's also a fairly unlikely location. Really, the one that, you know, if you, if the city went in another direction, it's own neighborhood business down there at the 711 location.
Does, doesn't the trail count as a park?
And, and actually, that was, is a great question, because we asked that question earlier when the first draft of the rules came out, and the State Liquor Control Board actually answered that question in the revised rules, which indicates that trails are not a public park. So, yeah, it's an interesting way that they went on that. So, just a reminder of what the proposed ordinance would do, it doesn't affect the actual use of marijuana, which is now arguably legal, but it would prohibit the producer, processor, and retail locations within the city. And with that, unless, if you have questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them. If not, then we'd suggest that you open and complete your public hearing and move on to deliberations.
So, I guess one other thing to kind of clarify is, the way this ordinance has been drafted is assuming that recreational marijuana uses would really only be considered in commercial zones, and that we don't really want to go down the path of allowing residential zones, home businesses to start pot shops.
Yeah, we actually put the prohibition throughout the table, including the residential zones. It's a little unclear to me, I've done a little research as to whether the state actually prohibits that in residential zone. I've looked for that provision, the MRSC says that that's true. I haven't been able to, unable to locate that actual language in the ordinance, but I understand that, at least according to some information, that it wouldn't be allowed in any case.
Did you go into electronic commerce at all for your, for this ordinance? I mean, does, could an electronic shop be set up and deliver in the area?
That's a good question. I'm not really aware of that being allowed under the state licensing laws. You have to identify a location in order to set up a retail store, and the licenses are allocated by jurisdiction. So, for instance, Sumamish got one in the allocation for the allowance for a retail outlet, so I don't...
So, delivery by mail is not allowed right now?
No, I don't, not that I'm aware of, you know, if there's anything on that, Jeff?
Well, if, if Amazon Fresh wanted to get a license, potentially they could, I don't, I don't know if you could mail pot, but...
Can you even mail alcohol?
Yeah, absolutely, you can mail alcohol.
Oh, just not across the state line.
But, so I guess that would be sort of, maybe a little bit outlandish, but that's sort of the closest comparison, you know, it's, the way I read this is it wouldn't prohibit somebody from receiving pot at their front door through a mail delivery service or UPS or...
So, buy stock in Amazon Fresh?
Possibly. The new Amazon Freshy-Fresh?
Yeah, I'm not really aware, I didn't read anything in the rules that would seem to allow that sort of thing, but I'm not an attorney, so I can't verify that 100 percent.
The other side of that, were they disallowed?
I mean, I think that the, the rules, as I've read through them, because they're requiring you to find, to identify a location, and that location has those criteria of being 1,000 feet from those facilities, that would make it difficult to meet the requirements for licensing.
But for example, one of the locations in Seattle could set up an electronic store and deliver in Sumamish.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thanks.
How we would regulate that anyway, because...
Like a postal service thing?
Yeah, you know, to stop all the mail trucks at city limits.
Yeah.
Anyway, sorry, Mike.
Well, I don't know whether this would apply, but in, if the case of wine, when wine is delivered, which it can be delivered by mail, there has to be, you have to sign for it, you have to be over, you have to be over 18.
21.
21, so that, maybe that would apply, but I don't know that for sure.
I think, I had asked earlier, I think in our meeting, about delivery services, and I think that, that answered that, I think it's a...
It's outside of a land use regulation.
Yeah.
Illegal. Any other comments, questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, so, just to remind our audience, we are holding a public hearing tonight on the land use rules for recreational marijuana. And I just wanted to briefly remind our audience about the rules that we have for public hearings. We give anyone that wishes to speak seven minutes. Everyone who wishes to do so will give them the, will be given the opportunity. Speakers are expected to focus their remarks to the specific question being discussed by the commission at the time and avoid extraneous issues. Speakers must state their views respectfully without personal attacks, insults, or disparaging comments. Everyone is expected to respect the views of others even when they disagree with those views. Disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Any person who persists in disrupting the proceedings will be asked to leave. Everyone will be expected to respect the person speaking, and interruptions will not be allowed. We ask that anybody who wishes to provide public comment during this public hearing to come up to the podium, give us your name and address, your public, your comments, as I mentioned, you have up to seven minutes, and with that, I'll open the public hearing. Really? No marijuana, okay, so, nobody wishes to give us public comment tonight on recreational marijuana land use provisions?
Chair, I think you forgot, folks who want to give public comment need to be present also.
Well, they can do written comment, though. Good question, yeah. Have we received written comment on this?
No, we have not.
Okay, so, this is the only night we are holding a public hearing for recreational And seeing still nobody wishing to provide comment, I'm gonna close tonight's public hearing at 6:52. Okay, so, thank you, Susan, for your presentation. At this point, we've already had some questions and answers. I guess the first thing I'd like to see is if anybody would like to offer a motion to start our discussion to...
I move to adopt the, the attachment A and the, and the ordinance 0214 as presented.
Is there a second?
It's just the technicality of how we do things here.
So, there'll be a second, we'll discuss.
And then we vote.
If we want specific changes, we can have amendments, and then...
But we need a second first.
I'll second it. Okay, all right, discussion. Any comments about the ordinance? I guess I'll start by offering, I, I believe that prohibiting recreational marijuana within the city is consistent with the character and the land use guidelines that we have. As Susan pointed out, really the only area that, that is viable is the small neighborhood business center on East Lakes Mamish Parkway that is fairly small and literally surrounded by residential uses. And as, and as Commissioner Collins pointed out, is right next to the trail, even if maybe that's not formally acknowledged as a public park. So, from a character perspective, it seems like this is the right decision, and, you know, this, this is step one. I mean, at some point in the future, Sumamish may decide, you know, that, that we want to change this, but for today, this seems like the right step in, in that direction.
And that, that selection of the site is basically the elimination of all the other sites based on state law.
Correct.
So, I mean, and we're just eliminating one little small area with this code.
I guess I would say that I'm not as dogmatic about the idea of it being antithetical to the character of our, of our city. I mean, I, I feel like, you know, we, we sell alcohol at, at QFC, you know, so I'm not, I don't think that that, that part of it does not really resonate with, with me. I will say that, that we are fairly constrained by the state regulations at this point about what we, what we can and, and can't do, and I feel like these regulations are consistent with those state regulations, so, I just, I'm just, wanted to say that.
I have a question for staff. Question for staff, so, why was the .3% chosen? Is that a state-derived number, or?
Which number are you referring to?
The second highlighted portion, it's sentence two, the second sentence, THC concentration greater than .3%?
Yeah, that is actually the state definition, so all the definitions in this ordinance come directly from the state law.
Nitpicking, I, I think the way that they phrase some of this stuff is not perfect, but I'm not into wordsmithing tonight. The, the seed and the stalk of the plant is described two different ways in the same paragraph, but that's, that's nitpicking.
Yeah, I think it's probably of the wiser course to stick and not vary anything from the state definitions.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't really know what these, again, I agree with you, the definitions are kind of hard to parse out what they're, what they're talking about there. I think one example would be if someone wanted to import some hemp fiber and make hemp-based products, and not produce it in the city, but to actually do hemp-based products, certainly there is an industry in our state that does that, and it's not, has, you know, no THC content in it, it is just, it's a fiber, and it appears from my reading of this that that would be okay, but I'm, I wouldn't be the person to test it, you know? So, but I don't, I don't really know the answer to that from reading these, it just seems kind of like they're talking both sides of it, and I'm not really clear on that.
All right, well, I'm not hearing or seeing any other questions or comments on the motion, so I'd like to call the question. All in favor of recommending approval of the prohibition of medical, of recreational marijuana, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So, how are we gonna handle handoff?
Oh, actually, that's a good question. I think right now, we've got it on the council schedule for October, and I didn't bring the council schedule with me, but we have planned to do the handoff at the same meeting that they do the first reading of this ordinance to kind of be more efficient with it. So, I think it's the first meeting in October and maybe the last meeting in October. So, that will, hopefully, we can, once we finalize the schedule, maybe we can send that out ahead of time, just so you know, you know, when that all is coming up.
Okay, all right. Well, that concludes this evening's new business. We don't have any old business, and seeing that we did have somebody, thank you, show up, I would entertain a sort of ad hoc, oh my god, change to the agenda to allow another... oh my god, change to the agenda to allow another comment period. All right, so we'll have one more, uh, public comment period. If you would so choose to provide us with public comment tonight, you came all the way here. Okay, all right. Well, thank you for coming. It was a, it was a very, uh, entertaining public hearing.
And efficient.
And, well, anyhow, so, uh, anything else for tonight? That's, that's it on our agenda.
Have a good summer, everybody.
Have a good summer, uh, we gotta do one more thing, though.
I move to adjourn.
Second, moved to adjourn, is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And the meeting is adjourned at 6:59. New record.